Present.
Commissioner Fisher?
Present.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez? Commissioner Wiseman Ward? Vice President Alexander?
Here.
President Matomani?
Here.
Thank you.
And I just want to note that we will take public comment for both items on the workshop agenda just prior to item D. During that time, the public can comment on those two items. SFUSD will also provide childcare for regular board meetings and monitoring meetings here on the first floor in the enrollment center at 555 Franklin Street from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. or the close of the meeting, whichever comes first. And childcare is for families who will be attending the regular and monitoring board meetings. Space is limited and will be provided on a first-come, first-served basis for children three to 10. At this time, wait, okay. Is there anything else? Or are we just, let me just look at the... Oh, yeah, okay. So accessibility information, translation services, virtual meeting information can all be found on our website and questions can be referred to the Board of Education Office at 415-241-6427 or Board Office at sfusd.edu. At this time, before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
We have none in person, but we may have some on Zoom.
We do have six on Zoom.
Okay, we will, um, let's take the Zoom, um, public speakers, one minute each, please.
Okay, so I will call Diane, Tom, Steve, Eric, and Scott, and in that order again, Diane, Tom, Steve, Eric, and Scott. Diane, go ahead, please. One minute.
Thank you. Can you hear me? All right, I'm assuming that you can hear me. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Diane Silver. I'm speaking on item B for the CVRA threat letter from Scott Rafferty. I'm speaking on behalf of Fair Vote, which is a national nonpartisan nonprofit organization that works to promote electoral reform, including proportional representation. Fair Vote recently did an analysis of racially polarized voting in San Francisco school board elections from 2016 to 2022, and we found meaningful levels of racially polarized voting in recent elections. We used several different metrics to assess the levels of racially polarized voting, and all of those metrics confirmed that overall finding. In the 2022 elections, white voters were able to elect all three of their most preferred candidates, but neither AAPI nor Latino voters were able to elect their preferred candidates. Where the preferences diverged, only the candidates supported by white voters were elected. Also, bullet voting behavior increased the political power of white voters. Depending on the group in the election, two to seven times more voters of color than white voters bullet voted. That is, they ranked only one candidate, and that limited their ballots effective.
Interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Tom?
Uh, thank you. My name is Tom Sharon. I am a co-founder of the California Rank Choice Voting Coalition. Uh, we are a state organization that works with Fair Vote and others, uh, to improve our elections, and I'm also here speaking about the CVRA threat letter, uh, agenda item. The CVRA does not establish a legal threshold of racially polarized voting, below which you would be guaranteed to win in court, uh, which means that the liability in any specific case is decided by a judge. And given the same case and same facts and analysis, one judge might find a city to be in violation, while another judge might rule the opposite. And given Fair Vote's analysis, if the school board does end up in court, there's an element of uncertainty and legal risk that you, uh, your current election method could be found in violation of the CVRA. And even if you did win the lawsuit, it could still be very expensive. That's because the district will have to pay for its outside attorney expenses, a demographic study, various studies of racial voting patterns and, and more. And so the district would not be entitled to demand that the losing plaintiff attorney pay its legal expenses, which is why cities like Burbank-
Thank you, Tom.
And Santa Monica-
I have to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. My name is Steve Chesson. I'm president of Californians for Electoral Reform, and I'm speaking on item B for the CVRA letter. When it comes to proving levels of racially polarized voting, the CVRA does not pay attention to what the elected body looks like. So the fact that the school board commissioners look diverse may not be persuasive to a judge. Instead, the CVRA prioritizes whether the protected classes of voters are able to elect their preferred candidates of choice regardless of the candidate's race. It's very possible that with an elected body like the school board, the diverse officeholders may have been selected by white voters rather than the protected class. And in fact, that's what Fair Vote's analysis appears to indicate. In the first part of their report, the ecological inference analysis found that the only candidates that were preferred by AAPI and Latino voters and that were elected were also preferred by white voters. But where preferences diverged, only the candidates supported by white voters were elected. That is fairly compelling evidence of racially polarized voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Hello, my name is Eric Richan-Eisner. I'm an SFUSD parent. So it seems, I'm also speaking on the same item about the CVRA threat letter. It seems that the options that the district has are they can, uh, go to districts to, uh, use the, to avoid any, um, lawsuit. They can fight the lawsuit and pay $1 million or something like the $9 million that Santa Monica has been, has been paying for their lawsuit, or they can try to negotiate a compromise with the CVRA attorney. Um, and I personally would prefer that the district spends these potential millions of dollars on teachers instead of lawyers. So, uh, I would highly recommend that you try to find some compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott? Scott?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
So much of what I would have to say about the CVRA has already been said by independent people this evening, but, um, my clients, um, came in good faith. We didn't actually threaten litigation. We offered to work with you. Uh, we brought your attention. We notified you of a possible violation, and in return, uh, you went, uh, and, and, and blindsided us. Uh, you violated the Brown Act. You distributed our so-called threat letter to your donors who, who made secret, uh, interventions delivered to every single board member that we specifically asked for. And then we were, we're told that they didn't exist. And, and this is wrong. This is a, a, a problem of governance that is equally critical to the, uh, electoral reform won't work if you keep doing your business in secret. And it shows how, how in unrepresentative this body is, that they would not, they would discriminate against a viewpoint in order to save their own incumbences.
Thank you, Scott. That is your time. Thank you. That does conclude the five minutes allotted for public comment on closed session items, closed session agenda items. We do have, uh, one more person. We're at the five minutes. Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, sorry. Thank you very much. At this time, um, we will recess into closed session. Um, please note that the board will take a roll call vote on the recommended student expulsions when we reconvene to open session, and I now recess this meeting at 5:11. Thank you.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot streamtext dot net forward slash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the PIN number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes, el Distrito escolarificador de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes translation services.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I do reconvene to open session. Um, and I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one elementary student, matter number 2023, 2024, number 29, one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion, commencing the day immediately following the expulsion order. Can I have a second?
Second. Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez? Commissioner Wiseman Ward? Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomani?
Yes.
Five eyes.
I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2023, 2024, number 32, for one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion, commencing the day immediately following the expulsion order. During expulsion enforcement in spring 2024, student will attend Civic Center. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Wiseman Ward, President Matomani?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
Five eyes.
Okay, and did I, wait, did I do two or three? Yeah, I did two. Okay, so we're on the third one, the third and then, okay. Um, I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2023, 2024, number thirty, thirty-three, for the remainder of the current spring 2024 semester and the following fall 2024 semester through December 21st, 2024. During expulsion enforcement in spring 2024, student will attend a county high school program. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Wiseman Ward, Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomani?
Yes.
Five eyes.
And item number two, report from closed session in the matter of SFUSD versus student TA OAH case number 2024-01-0584. The board by a vote of five eyes, two absent, Sanchez and Weissman Ward give the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student CF versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024-03-0240, the board by a vote of five eyes, two absent, Sanchez, Weissman Ward give the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And in the matter of student KL versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024-02-0921, the board by a vote of five eyes, two absent, Sanchez, Weissman Ward give the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. Um, at this time, I will reconvene to opens, or we have reconvened to open session and we are moving into public comments. But before we do so, I just want to thank, um, so many people for turning out to tonight, and I know that there is a number of students and families and educators and staff from, um, Ruth Asawa's, um, School of the Arts here tonight. I am pleased and that, um, you all were able to connect with staff and, um, have conversations this, uh, this evening, this afternoon, and will also be following. I know the superintendent will be following up. I do note that, um, our public session tonight, because it is a special meeting, monitoring session, is limited to agenda items. Um, and so that I ask that you adhere to that. Um, but I am appreciative of staff. I've appreciated your time because it's always important to hear from students. We are here to serve you after all as a district. Um, and I'm, I'm appreciate staff for taking the time to make those connections and to do the continuing follow-up, um, to work with the Resota community. Superintendent, would you like to add anything at this time?
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and yes, thank you for being here. When we talk about our values as San Francisco Unified, the first value is being student-centered. And so I always appreciate the opportunity to hear from our students. You have an amazing student body, uh, board representative in Lanani Simpson. Uh, yeah, we can applaud her. And, uh, as Commissioner, um, as President Matomani said, uh, this meeting, we're focused on our progress towards our goals for student outcomes, but, uh, we know there are concerns that students are bringing here, uh, and sharing. So we'll make sure to find time to follow up and to continue the conversation outside this meeting, uh, again, because your voice matters and we're here to serve you. So looking forward to that future conversation. But tonight, we're excited to focus on our progress towards third grade literacy.
I also want to note, you feel far too far away, Student Delegate Simpson. Um, we have a couple commissioners absent tonight. Um, and so without, with that, with the public comments, members of the public may address the board on any matter that is on the agenda. Virtual comment may be offered at the board president's discretion. And as a reminder, board rules and California law do not allow board members to discuss comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. Um, so at that, at this time, I will call for public comment in person, please, with students, um, prioritized.
I have three cards. Uh, none of them are students, I believe. All right.
Yeah, so go ahead.
If there are cards, I need them now. Start with students.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Angelina, can you come on back up? You can start first. And then I'm going to call the other folks up, and you can line up behind them as well. John Jerson, Chanel Blackwell, Supriya Ray, then Andrew Bennett. All right, you'll have one minute each. Start whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Angelina Costa. I am a senior in the Technical Theater Department at the Ruth Asawa School of the Arts, and I'm addressing the board on behalf of the Technical Theater Department students in regards to progress monitoring goal one. Um, in talking about third grade literacy and in talking about developing curriculum for our younger students, what's central to that issue is really our teachers and we'd like to, and the treatment of our teachers and how our teachers can not truly focus on our students unless they're fully, unless they are fully protected and they're able to actually apply all of their attention to those students. And as students, um, as students, especially in an, an alternative education high school, uh, our teachers, having those relationships with teachers from year to year, um, having the same teachers from year to year, that really makes all the difference. And that's a model that actually has been proven to help, uh, engage students in school. And however, last Monday on March 18th, we were informed that our directors of over 13 years-
Hi, Chanel Blackwell, uh, parent advocate for two kids in, uh, Resota, um, 2024, class of 2024, and APG and E seventh grade. I applaud the district for identifying and adopting a new curriculum, and we ask for there to be a continued sense of urgency in providing high-quality tutoring and intervention while students need additional support. In conclusion, San Francisco Unified School District, please listen to the students in the room and across our city. Thank you for being a service for public school San Francisco student.
Hi, my name is John Jerson. Oh, is that on?
Yes.
Hi, my name is John Jerson. I appreciate that we're spending time today on literacy. The report that we all read was a, a very important one, and I want to call attention to one key conclusion from the report. It states, while African-American and Pacific Islander kindergarten student achievement improved, it did so at the same rate as all kindergarten students. This does not appear to be supported by the data. If you look at the relative growth rates in the all kindergarten students group, it's 5.78%. For the AAPI group, it's 7.49%. There's a 30% difference. So I'm curious what accounts for that difference and why that's covered by, uh, a statement that indicates that they're the same rate. I think these issues are important. I'd love it if we approach them in detail. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Supriya Ray. I'm coming tonight to comment on the literacy workshop as well, and I wanted to thank you for-
I'm sorry, Supriya, would you mind pausing at the, all the cards, all the speaker cards have to be turned in before the item can be-
Okay, I have to state that. I'm sorry. We're new to this. We're just going to be supportive.
Okay.
So the more you can be transparent, that's helpful. So if you guys could take one more, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, are there two more speaker cards and then, okay, we can, that's fine. At this time, though, no, pardon? No more speaker cards at this time? Is that everyone? Okay. Sorry, apologies for interrupting.
Did I just restart?
Yes, go ahead, I'll restart. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Supriya Ray. I wanted to thank you all for continuing to hold these workshops and focus on the monitoring and the outcomes that our students are achieving here in SFUSD. I am very pleased to see that you continue to do this and look at things closely, but I'm also very concerned because the results show that we are still off track. And I'm particularly concerned in this regard with the slow pace of progress, if it can even be called that. There's way too many kids who are being left behind, and I don't feel like the actual attention is, is being focused on them in the way that's needed for them to catch up. It seems like high dosage tutoring, where folks are working one-on-one or with small groups of people, might be an effective way to help these students catch up better. It doesn't seem, it, we need to be doing much more to make sure that we're bridging these gaps and bringing all kids up to a basic at-grade reading level in order for them to have success later on in life. I've been, reading has been the basis for all of my success academically. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the next group. Please forgive me if I mispronounce names. As, Asmara, John Templeton, Lydia Melton, Fiona Hunt. I believe this is Sarah M. I'm not positive, but if you turn in a card, you can go ahead and line up. You'll have one minute each. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Asmara, and I'm a student of a junior at Sota High School. And when we think about students from grade level up, we know that there's evidence supporting having the consistency of a teacher going, moving with the students. And, um, we have that at Ruth Asawa, and specifically in the Theater Tech Department. Copy has been an amazing instructor that stayed with students from freshman year to senior year and supported them, and their retention rate, um, and that's been greatly impacted right now. So we have an excellent example-
I need to interrupt. Number, number one, um, we can't use, uh, names of students or staff here when we're speaking in public comment, and we need to stay on topic to the items that are on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm highlighting an example of excellence in a district where we're lacking it at the third grade level.
If you can please keep your comments to the item, the literacy item. This is a monitoring session with the agenda being posted, limited to discussion on literacy, monitoring, and prognostic, and curriculum adoption.
Thank you. Um, so as I was saying, when we have, uh, we know that when teachers are staying with students and continue to stay with students, there's an increase in retention, decrease in suspensions, decrease in expulsions, and this greatly impacts female learners. So does it Hispanic learners and Black students as well. And we have an excellent example at the high school level, and we need to support our faculty and our students.
Thank you.
Good, uh, good evening, John Templeton. I've been a textbook provider and teacher trainer for the district since 1992. Uh, want to, uh, work with you specifically on the third grade, uh, literacy, since California history is taught in the fourth grade. And we've certainly had experience with, uh, Civic Center, uh, with our Culture Fridays, uh, program where we have shown how to, uh, sort of redirect some of the energy of students. So, uh, we're doing something interesting, uh, on April 6th, where we're doing a California African-American Freedom Trail tour, uh, from Langston Hughes House, uh, here in San Francisco. So one of the ways to get people interested in literacy is to talk about the long history of literature that's written in San Francisco. So look forward to working with the district on it.
Hi, my name is Lydia Melton. I'm going to be building off of what Angelina said earlier. So just as with elementary schools, we know that children benefit more when they have a trusted adult that they build bonds with throughout all six years of elementary school, just like how our bonds with our teachers were ripped away this Monday, last Monday, when they were taken away from us all of a sudden without any explanation. Um-
I'm so sorry. We really, so the board can't comment and, or interact with personnel matters, and this is limited to the agenda items. And I, I do believe the community has been held, heard very loud and clear regarding the particular personnel matter that is affecting your community.
Okay. I, I understand that what we want to discuss is not on the agenda, but we have letters, um, that we would like to give you, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Bennett. Uh, I am the president of the Stagehands Union, IOTC Local 16, and I am a parent of, uh, current enrollee and a graduate, uh, the San Francisco Unified School District. How do these things align with literacy? Starting at the third grade level, we have programs in the city and county of San Francisco that provide excellent quality education, and it is our most important resource. In my work, in the work that I do, providing jobs with justice to San Franciscans of all walks of life, there is no better testament to the work that this board does than the quality of graduates that come out of the programs, including third grade literacy. I want to encourage this board to continue its excellent work so that the issues that you will hear people allude to, the issues that you all are working tirelessly on in all aspects, the issues of literacy and programs that are being discussed tonight, how do they all fit with the work that we do outside? When these people graduate, they come to us. When these tech students graduate, they come to us.
Thank you, that's your time.
We are one of the few places where they can actually have-
That is your-
Jobs with justice.
That is, that is your time.
And I really appreciate that your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Um, thank you. And I, I do want to note that the board also receives your emails and reads your emails. So you have been heard, and we, we do take those very, very seriously. Um, at this time, I would like to move to virtual comment and, um, limit that time to approximately twenty minutes out of equity for the in-person time.
So at this time, we will hear virtual public comment. Oh, we have public comment from our virtual participants. Each speaker will have one minute. And again, we are speaking to the workshop, um, on student outcomes. So that's progress monitoring and instructional materials adoption. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, en este momento estamos tomando comentarios de el público. Cada persona va a tener derecho a un minuto. Y recuerde que estamos en el tema acerca del taller y los resultados de los estudiantes. El progreso, el monitoreo del progreso de cada uno, así también con sus materiales. Gracias. Chinese, go ahead.
Hi, we're the, like, man. Hmm, y gale, just hey, I go, uh,网上给鬼手发言时间的， 干嘛呢？就是每人有一分钟的时间呢， 去啊做那个公众发言， 呃，你做公众发言，每人一分钟的时间，应该，thank you.
Thank you. Marcia?
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Commissioners. My name is Marcia Parrot, and I'm very pleased new reading language curriculum is being considered, especially for the TKP pre-K programs. Regarding the tutorial Amira component, I do have reservations. Research confirms what we already know. Children learn through interaction with others. What better way to engage in learning a language? AI is no replacement for a person tutoring a child, whether they are in person or virtual. If you truly want success, invest. Invest in a high-quality tutorial program and intervention with trained tutors, especially for our most vulnerable students. They deserve nothing but the best from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, great. Hey, it's Vanessa Maro, um, calling in from Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. I actually wanted to mention that I was a member, parent of the Regional Advisory Committee of the West, which included California as part of recommendations given to Secretary Cardona, um, who is our Secretary of the U.S. Department of Ed. One of the things that we noted in our report was a focus on literacy. In fact, we actually facilitated seven groups, focus groups across California to talk to, um, professionals, parents, others that focused on English language learners, students with disabilities and students of color, all of which said that literacy must be a priority, that we have to really focus in on high, um, frequency, high-demand supports, such as tutoring and intervention programs, things like that. Um, really happy to share that report with you over email. Um, and thank you for, um, making that a priority and looking at especially the focal groups. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Decoding?
Oh, hello. Um, this is Megan Potente. I'm co-state director for Decoding Dyslexia California and also a former SFUSD teacher and parent. Um, and I'm calling about the literacy initiative today, and I want to thank everyone, uh, the board and educators for all the hard work over the last few years. But I'm calling today to reiterate that purchasing a new curriculum and providing light support is simply not enough. Other districts on this same journey are seeing gains in student learning, but I know of no districts moving the needle without a heavy investment in teacher training. Teachers deserve to know the why behind instructional practices. This extends beyond learning just how to use a new curriculum. Other districts serve as good examples that we should learn from. Palo Alto has made significant gains for black students, emerging bilingual students and Latino students. San Mateo Foster City is another district nearby that has deeply invested in this work. Uh, so there are a lot of models out there, and, uh, we really need to invest in teachers um, and recognize this is a long road, uh, but certainly raising, um, literacy outcomes for students in San Francisco is a priority. And, um, I'm excited to see the work ahead and the investment that will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany?
Hi, hi, good evening. Um, my name is Brittany. I'm with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco. I appreciate that you have set aside this time for updates from discussions of this third grade AAPI literacy goal. After many conversations in this room and across the district on this priority, as I read through the documents giving an update on the status of progress made on this goal, I noticed subtle but concerning language used around success being impacted by the resources a school has. And it highly involves the parent's time to learn the new curriculum. Before we go celebrating the rise in student literacy, we need to take a step back and look at the wider view of the city, which shows the disproportionate of success measures. The teachers work hand in hand with all parents, especially those whose primary language is not English or parents who simply do not have the education or socioeconomic level to put aside time to teach their children at home after school. However, they need support like high dosage reading interventions so that students far below proficiency can catch up to their peers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, hi, I'm a parent and a special education teacher in the district. I think what bothers me is that there's no talk on how we can support students with IEPs and how we're going to support educators, uh, with reading, right? Um, their guideline for students who have dyslexia is a hundred and eighty minutes per week. It's a guideline, but that is the consistent routines. But when we got special educators from schools and place them somewhere else, how are we achieving that? I don't hear any talk about special education in any of these meetings, and it does, it's really concerning because in the bargaining right now, one thing we can do to help educators and students with reading is lowering the case numbers and limits. And I keep hearing, okay, we're here, you students, we hear you educators. It's one thing to be heard, it's one thing to take action to what is being said. So please don't say you hear us if you're not going to do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Isley?
Hi, Ashling Pring, um, middle school English teacher and reading acceleration teacher. Um, I think the third grade literacy goal is super important, but in my accelerated reading class, most of my students are still in eighth grade, reading at a third grade level. So we cannot stop the discussion at third grade. Further, the curriculums that you are looking at, the six to eight grade, eighth grade curriculum has curriculum for K through five, which would support students in the routines starting in kindergarten that would follow them through all the way till eighth grade in English classes. Um, I'm not sure if that was considered as an option, but it's unclear to me why. Um, further, I don't know how much teachers' opinions and concerns about this curriculum for the middle school level were heard. Um, and that does concern me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. SF Parent Coalition?
Thank you. Uh, this is Meredith Dodson with SF Parents. Um, I want to just say a huge thank you to all of the parents and all of the educators who have worked so hard, um, advocating, working with the district, um, to get some of these changes to happen. I also want to thank, um, the curriculum and instruction team for their incredibly hard work to make all of these changes happen. I think it's a really exciting monumental change for the district that's going to benefit thousands of kids for years to come. Um, and we still have some concerns, and we're keeping a close watch. Um, and some of the things we're going to be listening and looking out for, um, are that you have a clear roadmap for how these changes will unfold. Um, we want to see, you know, beyond a three-page overview that you're, you're demonstrating and understanding of how much it will take, um, including the price tag of doing this well. Um, we want assurances that SFUSD will identify each and every child not, uh, meeting grade level milestones and that you will ensure they have research-backed, high-dose tutoring and interventions. And also those assurances that teachers are getting what they need and school leaders are getting what they need.
That is your time. I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. Thank you. Patrick?
Hi, thank you, Patrick Wolf. Um, so first of all, I just want to echo what many people have been saying. It's just so great that you're doing all this work and focusing on measuring outcomes and really committed to improvement. So thank you all. I want to call your attention, um, to the goals that you have set because while we all want to see very rapid improvement, I think the goals are unrealistic. And I worry that if the district is making steady progress but falling short of goals that were set unrealistically high, that progress might be turned away out of frustration. And I would hate, I think we would all hate to see that happen. So I want to encourage you to look at your goals and ask yourself what you think is realistic and achievable as you work towards continuous improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. SB?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, um, I did not intend to speak tonight, um, but it occurred to me to ask if you all were aware that in your, in one of your K eights, um, there's a peer resource program, and the eighth grade peer resource students contributed last
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. Uh, um, we are speaking to, um, work.
This is about literacy.
Oh, great. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Checking. Yeah, I didn't intend to speak, but I was thinking about how this group of students saw a need in the third through fifth grade classes, math, ELA and SDC classes. And so last year, they were able to lead fifty sessions for nine targeted students in those classes that raised their scores in these, uh, areas. And they gave three hundred and sixty-five hours of their time to doing that. I hope the board will intervene in the cutting of this program that is happening right now um, and that the superintendent will address this. And so they may continue their important work in the field of literacy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That does conclude virtual public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so as we usually do, we will move to the, um, the table here to convene the monitoring section. We will return to, um, the, we'll return to our seats here for the action items for curriculum adoption. But at this time, we'll move to item D. And as a reminder, um, questions and answers regarding agenda items that were submitted by commissioners and answered by staff can be found on item F, should the public be interested in that. But at this time, let's move to the center table to commence, um, item D one. Okay, um, at this time, we will convene, um, and begin on item D one. Um, Superintendent, would you like to introduce the item?
Um, yes. Thank you, President Matamadi. Good evening again, everyone. Um, I'm excited to share our third grade literacy progress monitoring report. This is actually the third progress monitoring report that we're doing this year around our third grade literacy goal. But this is, um, uh, this report's going to have a number of firsts. First of all, we are honing in on one of the interim goals and are pleased to be going deeper around our interim goal to increase the number of kindergarteners, um, who are African American and Pacific Islander who are meeting standards at the end of kindergarten. This will also be our first progress monitoring report that we have data from a fall benchmark to winter benchmark where we can really reflect almost in real time about the actions we've taken to try to improve, uh, outcomes, see the results of those actions, actions, and then demonstrate how we're, uh, take, changing course or taking additional actions to try to, uh, to make accelerated progress. And then I'm just excited to be highlighting some of the actions we're, we're taking while recognizing we still have work to do. Um, and so tonight, uh, I'll share about our data, and then we'll hear from our Director of African American Achievement Leadership Initiative, Letitia Irving, on our Each and Every By Name Initiative. And then we'll hear from Dr. Nicole Priestley on some additional actions we're taking, as well as, um, the results of our professional development. And so we've started these progress monitoring reports, sharing, uh, the data. And this is comparing our fall benchmark to our winter benchmark. And as a reminder, uh, we adopted a new benchmark this year, the STAR assessment, that, uh, you know, assess the students at, um, standards, and we saw is, uh, well correlated to the, um, the third, the third grade standardized assessment the students take, uh, for the state, the Sback. And what we saw is, um, overall, and this is where we're referring to overall improvement, um, slight improvement in kindergarten, uh, uh, from the fall to winter assessment. And what's good about that is that not only do they improve, but the assessment gets harder as it gets into, um, the second benchmark and the third benchmark because it's assessing now more standards, because at that point of the year, it's, it's expected the students know more standards. So we saw improvement among all kindergartners, and we saw improvement among our, uh, African American and Pacific Islander kindergarteners as well. Um, however, the two major challenges with the data are when you just look at our overall goal of third grade literacy, we saw However, the two major challenges with the data are when you just look at our overall goal of third grade literacy, we saw a slight decline. And so we know we need to get that even higher if we're going to meet our, our end of year target. And then while we did see improvement for African American and Pacific Islanders students, it's not at the accelerated rate we need to meet our interim goal. And so you can see on the next slide here, we do note that we are off track towards the goal. We had set a kind of the, the trajectory as being needing forty percent of the students to meet standards. And we have thirty-three percent of the students meeting standards. And, you know, and this is after having done, I'd say significant work focused on specifically the progress of our African American Pacific Islander students. We started the year and the main initiative we put in place to support their progress is what we call our Each and Every By Name Initiative. And we call that because our mission is that each and every student receives the high quality instruction and equitable support they need to thrive in the twenty-first century. And when we're taking this targeted approach and looking at our African American and Pacific Islander students. Turns out then we're talking about each and every one of them, we're talking about about two hundred twenty-five students per grade level. And so it really feels like as a system, we should know each of them by name. And of course there's their teacher and the principal knows them by name. But if this is a system wide goal, we want to wrap our arms around them and their families to make sure that they're doing well. And so we started the year by reaching out to those families, making the connection from the beginning. And then we put in place some practices at the district level and in work to support the schools to help improve performance. And again, we see we have a ways to go, but I think the big move we're trying to make is shifting from working independently on our parts to interdependently. So what I mean by that is if we're going to improve outcomes for our students, yes, it happens in the classroom. But what's the support for the classroom? So we have support that comes from the district, from our lead divisions that supervises our schools. From our curriculum and instruction division that develops the curriculum instruction and the professional development. From our student and family services division that works with families and supports students' social emotional learning. And this oftentimes the work to support the schools, people working really hard but working independently. And now we're really working interdependently. You've heard us talk about our coordinated care teams at sites. That's where people at sites from different departments, like you might have the school administrator, the social worker, the special education teacher meeting, talking about kids. We're doing the same thing now at the district level. And so I, you know, go to the meetings and I'm excited to see and really challenge the group. We're talking about how we're supporting the schools and actually how we're supporting individual students. So you have district leaders who know these students by name. So to share more about what that looks like, I'd like to turn it over again to our Director of African American Achievement Leadership Initiative, Letitia Irving.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne, and thank you for your vision because this is, we're living out something that Dr. Wayne came up with and really excited about it. And I wrote notes because it is exciting and it's a lot. So bear with me and I'll get through it. So if you, as you all have heard, in order for us to meet our interim goal to increase the percentage of Black and Pacific Islander students. Who are meeting grade level proficiency, we've adopted the Each and Every By Name, which is a comprehensive case management approach for our two hundred and twenty-five scholars. This approach first started with a common understanding that we must include the village, right? So Dr. Wayne talked about all of us who are there at the central office level. We want to make sure that I want to add to that list of folks that we did, the F A Samoa, Samoan initiative is there, the Ali team is there. The C says team is there, you have the A pack. And so it is a little bit of everything, but so that's the central office folks and the people who get paid by the district. We also know that there is the site. So you had to include your site level folks. We are working with the families and then spreading out to the community. And I know there are some more community folks and people in our city who want to be engaged, so don't think that it's stopping here. It's not going to stop here. And we also know that in order for this to work, it had data must inform our interventions and guide our time together. So every time we are together in our comprehensive coordinated, or excuse me, that's the C says, every time we're together in our C C T teams, our coordinated care teams, we are looking at data. We're looking at academic data and then all of the other supporting data, attendance and behavior and the ways that they are impacting our students' outcomes. And then we strategize about what we can do to shift that. And then we know we must work in partnership with a heavy emphasis on the we. So we are not trying to give our school sites more work. We are not trying to put more on our families. We're taking the onus at the central office level to make sure that we're putting in the work. Okay, so what's that look like? Robust family partnerships. So we made personalized phone calls. No, you can go back. I'm going to walk through this slide. We made personalized family calls to each of family. We conduct regular check-ins via phone calls or emails. We've distributed free literacy kits through the African American Early Childhood Educators. That's one of our partners. And they gave free literacy kits at a couple of our events. And if the families weren't unable to make it, they could just fill out a link, a very quick thing and get it free mail to their house, free of postage. Given access and more recently, which we're really excited about, and I can't wait to show you the pictures. We distributed leveled decodable readers. So we looked at our children's STAR assessment scores and where they were. And we're partnering with Just Write Readers and we send them backpacks and we're going to send them a sessions through. So each of the schools received it. Hopefully they got home to the kinders and we will host a series of meetings we're talking about in a bit. All right, the efforts were aimed to enhance the family's familiarity with the science of reading and to strengthen that home to school connection. Our next strategy occurs district wide. We have reinvested in our aligned professional learning structures. So every time our teachers come together, our principals come together, we're looking at our, our instructional leadership teams, our grade level collaborations, our professional developments. We're talking about an emphasis on tier one instruction and we're making sure we're talking about our Pacific, Pacific Islander and Black kindergarten students. What are we doing around instruction at the very basic level and making sure that we don't forget it in those sessions? We already talked about our teams. Let's see, at the site based level, this is where it's going to get a little exciting. At the site level, R P A already sends out data report cards and they offer regular data talks to our schools and our school sites. But now, to make sure that we are seeing, we are progress monitoring and moving towards our goals. R P A, you can look at the next slide, even though I'm going to ask you to go back here. Nope, one more. Go back up. We are sending out these personalized assessment data reports. So these reports which align to the STAR assessments comes from Renaissance. It's a platform that goes with our STAR assessment. These individualized reports for our two hundred and twenty-five children will summarize the skills mastered. The focal skills that need to be bolstered. It will help our teachers shape and adjust their instruction and it will help them tailor their instruction for the each and every. So what you see on the right side, those are the focal areas. Each of those domains have focal areas that that child needs to work on. So our teachers get this and it's, it's in teacher speak and it's going to help them really think about what they can do for instruction and then it's available to family. So this is for instruction, but what we said is that we're, we're giving our families these tools. I sent out an email to each, each and every one of these families and told them about this. Link the website where it says on our district website what it is so that our families can go and have these conversations with their teachers and ask, how do I do this? How do I help at home? So we're really excited about that. Also at the site level, R P A is working, so they started, excuse me. We know that we have some incredibly talented teachers. We have very, a bunch of talented teachers and they have a plethora of best practices. So we are asking them to come up with a playbook to offer us some of the strategies that they've used to move instruction. How did they help our children get on grade level? How do they move proficiency? And we're asking that they send that to us. We're going to give them credit for it, add it to a playbook that we'll be able to use next year as we try to scale this out. And they're going to get a stipend. So super excited for that. The letter went out today. So we'll see what type of emails we get and folks start to share their best practices with us. All right, I'm getting ready to close. Don't worry. So now that, so let's see what we want to talk about here. No, not yet. One more thing, one more thing, Dr. Wayne. Now, while we, we know that, and I think we heard it today, that our Black and Pacific Islander students have slightly improved. It's not at the rate that we want them to improve. We know that we must do better. And yes, that is an ambitious goal. I get it. It is an ambitious goal, but we have to have high expectations for what our kids can do and what we believe that we can invest to make sure they get there. So one of the investments will be high dosage tutoring through AMIRA. And so you'll hear from Dr. Priestley in just a bit, who will share more about what that looks like. We're very excited to offer that to our students. So as we close, you can look at the screen. This was our very first Each and Every Book Club, which was hosted last night at Leola Havert. So we invited our families to bring their Just Write Readers. So you see those little green packets? They're going to get five offerings of those packets and they're decodable readers at their levels. And we just, we're going to guide them through it. How do you use these readers? What are some of the fun activities you can do together? So in the back, they have a bunch of like free reading that you can just do to, because for the love of reading. And then we're going to, with these packets, work with the families and really show them how they can teach reading at home, not teach it, support reading at home. The families were incredibly excited. There were families who traveled from all over the city, took two buses, families who said, I got this packet. One parent in particular said, I got this packet. I didn't know what it was. It was in his backpack. It was a blue backpack. I didn't know what the blue backpack was. I opened it up and there were books that my child could actually read. All of the books that we have in our libraries are books they cannot read. He cannot read. And then we got these books and he can read them and he felt really excited by it. So that parent came all the way from across town as well. And we're very, very excited to introduce Each and Every Book Club. I have given you all the flyers on one of these other slides. There you go. Please join us. We'll be at the San Francisco Public Library just across the street on April thirteenth. And you all are invited to come and hang out with us and see what we're doing at our book club.
Dr. Priestley, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Right. So again, we recognize that we have not had the accelerated growth, accelerated growth that we need to meet our literacy target. And yes, it is an ambitious target, but our students are very capable. And so recently the board approved a high dosage tutoring program called AMIRA. And immediately upon approval of that program, we began the process of connecting schools with high dosage tutoring. We sent a letter to introduce AMIRA to our site leaders. In that letter, they received an overview of the program, what would it would entail for teachers and what would it also entail for students? We just followed up with a second letter that provided the training dates and that would provide opportunities for teacher learning as well as for site leaders. And tomorrow we will have our first training offering from our AMIRA partners. So teachers can learn about what the program offers and how they can work with students in their classrooms on the practices that are in the AMIRA program. We are also very excited to connect our students, especially the Each and Every that Ms. Irvin just named to the AMIRA program. We will have multiple opportunities to connect our, not only our teachers and our site leaders, but also our families. As Ms. Irvin mentioned, we are beginning that kickoff as well. So AMIRA builds on the science of reading practices, which we know are crucial for foundational skill building. We know that AMIRA is a research based program and used with fidelity shows improvement in student growth. And just to give you another level of understanding and overview, we will see a video about AMIRA. So while we're working through our technology, which we know, when technology it works is great and when it, it is, you know, not always friendly. But this video really highlights how it, it can be used in the classroom. It's, it shows that there's an avatar, there's a person there that a student can connect with. And actually the student reads into the program and the program gives the student feedback on how they're reading. And gives them instruction on what is working and what they are doing well and areas where they might improve. It also provides feedback to the teachers. You can see the teacher is walking around in this actual picture, taking notes. But it also provides feedback to the teacher and how the teacher can support that instruction, how she can support it beyond the AMIRA time in her actual lessons. And then how she can continue to program for AMIRA. I also just want to note that we have our AMIRA partners here with us. They came in the audience to support us. They're in back there. So if we have additional questions about the program, they're here for that.
Let's use the last minute just to talk about professional development.
Yep.
Can you go to the next slide?
Wish you have one more slide. So in our last presentation in December, we had an update on our professional development. We continue to focus on our early related Wednesdays on complex texts, text based evidence and knowledge building. And based on that feedback from teachers, we see that they are incorporating in your packets, you will see that we have quotes from teachers. And that they are taking parts of what they are learning in their professional development. And putting into that classroom practices on a daily basis, which has impact on the student experience. We want to note all that that data is not shared. Oh, there it goes. You will see going across the board that we have some very positive feedback from teachers and what they are learning and how they're able to incorporate. Those areas of focus into their classroom. I do want to note in the March data, you just see a little bit of a dip. But we closed out that data to analyze, to be ready for this meeting. But our data tally actually looks very similar now that we've closed out the month. So it looks pretty consistent across the board. So we're very excited to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Dr. Priestley and Ms. Irving. And so again, this was, this is our first progress monitoring report where you see, you know, how we're doing compared to the baseline. And so you see while off track, the effort that's made, but then also hopefully you see the additional steps we're taking to try to accelerate progress between now. And our final assessment, which happens right before the school year ends. So with that, I'll turn it over to President Matamadi to lead our discussion.
Sure. And I'm just going to remind our board members what's in front of them in addition to the presentations. And these are linked to the, the agenda item as well, is our effective goal monitoring worksheet to help focus us. We also have our vision values and goals and guardrails. And one thing that's a little, I do want to jump into the conversation, but one thing in talking with our, with A J Crable. He reminded us that especially now that we're in year two and have monitored these goals consistently now. And are monitoring actual progress as opposed to looking at the baseline. At the end of this conversation, we will decide whether or not to accept the monitoring report, which doesn't mean we agree with it. Or we think that the progress is as fast as we wanted, or perhaps there's elements of the report, the report that we'd like to see more of or less of, et cetera. It's about whether or not that this is a, a framework that we can accept as being reasonable to keeping us on track to our overall goal. But with that, I don't want to spend too much time there. I just will, we'll close the conversation around that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Vice President? Well, the three, so the three, so and I'll bring you towards the end of, so for those of you following along, it's on the third. Page of this four page document that does not have page numbers on mine. Towards the bottom, it says after goal monitoring, to accept the monitoring report or not. So once we've completed the monitoring conversations up to the board, whether to accept or not accept the report based on three questions. Does the reality match the vision? Is there growth towards the vision? And is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth toward the vision? So, and we will be doing that with all of our monitoring going forward. And for this meeting, we did not notice it as an action item, but in the future we will and we will take action accordingly. But with that, are there any, do you want to add any clarifications or, okay. With that, I open it up to the board for any questions that you would like to have to, in order to kick off this monitoring conversation.
Thank you to staff and the superintendent for the report and for all the great work that's happening in the district and all the different things that folks are leading. I think a lot of appreciation to that. I think, I guess my primary concern is for interim goal one, whether or not the current. I think, I, I guess my primary concern is for interim goal one, whether or not the current goal is realistic. Um, just kinda looking at kind of, I guess, kind of the first progress markers. It just seems like we're so off track. Um, even though it is a small number of students, it doesn't seem like we have the ability to kind of accelerate um the achievements um and the proficiencies in the ways that we, we want them. I guess I would love to hear from the superintendent. If, just I guess, what is your thought about that? If you still have confidence um in the goal and our ability um to hit it? Or if it's something that um we're not gonna hit and we need to figure out, I guess, different strategies? And then I have, I guess, one follow-up.
Um, uh, yes, and just to clarify, you're talking about the interim goal one point one or the?
Yeah.
Okay, so for interim goal one point one, um, I'm uh not yet ready to say that the goal, we're not going to meet it and it's too ambitious. And the reason I say that is because we, again, this is the first time really having looked at data and then um changing course and adding strategies to see if there's a, uh, see if there, if we can make a difference. I think you can see, you know, the significant amount of work that's being done to work, you know, to try to achieve this goal. And if after a year, we still haven't made that accelerated progress, I think we do need to step back and look and, and really question then the strategies and uh, and you know, the, the appropriateness of the goal. But I feel like for this interim goal, you know, I, with what we're intentionally putting in place, you know, I still am uh, you know, remaining optimistic, we'll make that accelerated progress. I will say this, not the yes, but that's why I was asking, like for the, for the S-BAC goals, you know, and seeing that third grade data is concerning. And if we don't make progress between this year and next, uh, uh, which compared from last year to this year, it then becomes that much harder to meet our five-year goal. And so, you know, I could see, we gotta see how we do on the S-BAC and then have that conversation uh next year. But one of the reasons why we picked this interim goal for kindergarten is these kindergartners will be the third graders in 2027. And so you thought it was important to have a goal that we, we start with them and track them till uh they, they take the assessment. So um, uh, so still, I feel like too soon to tell for interim goal one point one. Uh, and we'll have, you know, we're trying some things that we'll see the progress in May.
Appreciate that response. And I, I guess I would just say, I think my ultimate concern is seeing the struggles that we've had thus far and kind of knowing the changes that are happening to school sites in the coming year. Just, I, I think I'm just concerned about our ability to maintain the progress that we have made, kind of given that staff are gonna have larger class sizes and changes to staffing models around the district, uh, how schools are staffed around the district. And so I think for me, I'm, I'm curious, how are we planning to address the changes that are coming, which will kind of take us away from what we're currently doing and kind of put those current practices in like a new arena and kind of a new landscape as the school sites see shifts?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so it's, so while we, we do have um a different approach to school staffing and budgeting, and it's one that is trying to be more aligned to our goals while also being mindful of our fiscal responsibility. And so uh, you're correct in that we did not identify as a strategy having uh class sizes, you know, fewer than uh twenty-two to one. In reality, the way it's gonna play out, well, we, we will still have about a twenty-to-one average, if not even less. Uh, because, you know, the way real world classes work, they don't all go up to, go up to twenty-two. Where we did identify the key strategies that we think are important are, one is having a curriculum that's based on the science of reading that all teachers will use. We'll have that in place next year. And then two, having support for that curriculum through coaching uh and system, uh, coaching that's not um, you know, school by school, but really following some system-wide practices. And so those two plays, those two pieces are incorporated into our um staffing plan and into our budget for next year. And that's where we're, we're expecting to be able to uh bring about some systemic change and maintain that investment on early literacy.
Um, thank you. Yeah, thanks again. Uh, I'll echo the thanks to staff and the exciting work on the curriculum adoption. We are um very happy that that's on the way. Um, my question is about the, about tutoring. And uh, I mean, it's great that, that we're including that in the, you know, in, in, in particularly in this intervention. Um, and I also wanted to thank um a couple of different parent, SFU C parent groups that have reached out recently about tutoring. Um, SF Parent Coalition sent a document, I think, to the board, um, talking about tutoring as one of the key pieces and providing um research-based definition of what high-quality teacher, teaching, or excuse me, high-quality tutoring looks like. I also had a meeting about two weeks ago with Innovate, a group of SFU C parents from Innovate. And coincidentally, they did the exact same thing. They said, we're really interested in high-quality tutoring. And here's a research-based definition of high-quality tutoring. I didn't see that yet in our report. And so I'm curious, what is our definition of research-based? Um, high-quality tutor, research-based definition of high-quality tutoring? Cause I, cause again, I really appreciate these parent groups for kind of putting that out there. Uh, and then what's our thinking? I know, I mean, this seems like a kind of a stopgap, like let's get this done quickly. But what's our thinking about district-wide moving into next year around interventions in terms of high-quality tutoring?
Thank you for that question. We were having that same conversation earlier today. And so um, it's very much appreciated. I think the first thing we talked about that a program, when we talk about um high-quality tutoring, that it is research-based, that it has been investigated, that it has a strong foundation such as the science of reading, that it can be um rooted in and that we can examine, um, or researchers can examine and report out on. So I think that's number one. I think the um second piece of that is a program, which is great about AMIRA, is, is the consistency of it, is the fidelity of it. And so access three to four times a week when students are engaging in that high-quality instruction, even if it is on a um, a digital platform, that's really important. And so when we talk about high dosage tutoring, it's something that we want something to have a consistent experience in. I would say another piece is we want um tutoring that gives feedback. And so one of the things I wish we had been able to see the video, which I think it really illuminated, that an opportunity to provide feedback to in, in, impart um where teachers can use feedback to shift instruction, right? So to have tutoring, it inform what is happening in the classroom, in the experience. Because what we're looking for is um a change element, right? So something that creates the difference. So I would say shortlist, those three things would be our definition of high dosage tutor.
And so I do wanna acknowledge, I think what the question mark is, is what um, uh, Dr. Priestley described and what the research says is all included in AMIRA and it's through the um, an AI platform, right? And so, you know, for us, why this, we're able to move on quickly is, is, you know, getting additional staffing and particularly doing it in the way that Dr. Priestley described, which is frequent and in the classroom. Um, you know, is, is, uh, I mean, you know, we've had challenges even just getting the classroom teacher staffed in the classroom. So this lets us move quickly. And then this semester, we'll see, you know, how that AI interaction um works with the students. Cause they do get feedback and everything, but it, you know, but again, I think we have in mind the idea of like a tutor sitting, sitting with the kid and that's what's not, not a part of this.
Yeah, that, yeah. And it would be great to get, I mean, just like, again, the definitions that these parent groups have provided are much more specific around, like uses a consistent tutor, receives ongoing support, often a credential teacher than some of them say, is embedded in the school day or immediately after the school day, uses data to inform tutoring sessions, groups of three students or less that meet at least three times per week. I mean, they're very specific. So I guess I'm wondering if we have, it sounds like we don't quite have that yet. And I'm, I'm wondering if we're gonna build out or adopt a specific definition like that so that we have clear criteria that are based in research. I guess that was sort of my, where I was headed with that. But again, it's, it's starting to sound like a suggestion and I, so, but just to be clear, I mean, I guess my, my question was, how are we thinking then strategically about the standards for tutoring and then moving into, y- y- you know, next year? Not, again, judging a particular program, but how do we get this out there district-wide?
You can add, would re-add on.
So we've also been in conversation with some of our partners, some of the ones you've spoken of as well, around um bringing in-person tutoring to students, which is a little bit more complex effort. We were able to use AMIRA in a more immediate fashion, but we are investigating um with our partners. We've talked to some of our neighboring school districts. We took a field trip over um to talk to some of them to see how they were able to employ that. So I think um with a little bit more runway, I think we could see that coming into our school system.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, how much was this contract with AMIRA that we approved on the twelfth? I actually can't find it on the consent agenda. What item was it? Does anyone know?
Let me see if I can find it real quick.
Okay. Yes, I'm searching. Um, so that's, I have other overarching strategy questions here, but I, I think my, forgive me AJ, um, this is more of a, a technical question than it is a, a strategic question. But I volunteer in a kindergarten classroom and it's many of these each and every folks that we're trying to reach in this classroom. And I see us in our um clever time, the struggle to keep these twenty kindergartners engaged on a computer where they're supposed to be without two of us revolving the classroom at the, I, I, I'm just curious as to how we're gonna overcome that. And the, w- we saw during the pandemic how hard it was to get kids to access online learning. So when we're talking about, you know, this in our Title I schools in particular, in some of our most marginalized students, I really ha- I'm, I'm, I'm skeptical, to be frank, you know, about how this can be actually done with fidelity. Um, not to mention the fact that a teacher forwarded me next year's sample elementary instructional schedules. And every single minute in kindergarten and first grade is, is already scheduled with what we've already proposed to our teachers, such that there isn't room for our kindergartners and first graders to have an afternoon recess. And one of the schools I was talking to actually said, they actually had to cut an arts block to fit all this in. So if we have, i- if we're trying to put this in the school day, where we meant, where? It, it's the, I mean, every single minute of the day is scheduled. So I, I'm just trying to figure out from a, so to bring it back to a strategic question is, um, I, I, I don't see the communication and collaboration yet between our different groups to see how this is going to fit into the whole child and everything else that we have. It seems like a very siloed effort. And so my larger, my um, large, my, my real question here is strategic planning, right? Um, you know, this, we're implementing a new tier-one curriculum. I'm so, Kita, you are so excited. I agree with everyone. Professional development, ongoing coaching, check, check. Progress monitoring, sounds like we're working on that too. The resource alignment piece and, and the whole overarching strategic plan is, I think, where I'm still looking for. And the question that we have to answer today, number three, um, number three, as far as the accepting the, the report, um, is, do we have all the information we know that we need to know to see that this is going to be implemented with fidelity? Um, is there a strategy and plan sufficient? Haven't seen that plan yet. So can you elaborate? Can, I think we need, maybe it's just me, but I need a whole lot more details in the plan to be able to implement this with, to, to vote on this, to vote yes. I'll stop there. It was a lot.
So thank you for those questions. They're all the right ones and conversations we're having ourselves and actually with our AMIRA partners. And we talked about like, what does this success look like in the, over six weeks, over six to eight weeks that we went? One is, you are right, this is gonna take some planning and collaboration with our teachers. This will require some structures in our classroom, much like when kindergartners come in and we talk about what a small group look like. What are the other kids doing when you have five kids? Like, we're gonna have to train our teachers and our students on how to use this platform. I think one thing, um, this is a supplement to their instruction. And I think that's very important to know. We would be ecstatic to see students um engage, one, log on, get in, figure out what's going on with it, and then have students engaging, you know, build that capacity for longer periods of time. We're not asking students to do this like their whole entire instruction of the day like we were during the pandemic. These are fifteen, twenty-minute snippets of time that we want them to do multiple times a week. And so um, I think that's one thing to highlight. I think another thing to highlight, where do we find time in the day? And so we wanna be flexible with that with our schools, whether it's before school, during school, or after school. We wanted to happen at school, cause we know that's when we have the most um support for our kids there. So I think we need to work with sites at different spaces and times to make sure we are working with them and saying like, what works for you? When is the time in the day that it might work? Is it during a library time? Is it during a computer? Is it during the time that needs to mesh with a, another time in the day? So I think we gotta work with our sites to be um intentional about utilizing all of our time and maximizing it. So I think we are in that progress, in the process of defining what that looks like. So I'm happy to bring back to you in a later point, a more um details, perhaps plan with a site where we can um show that in practice.
Thank you for the presentations. Um, I guess a, a follow-up question is around teacher training and looking through the um implementation timeline. Would you be able to just illus- to address maybe some of the questions and concerns that Commissioner Fisher brought up? Can you illustrate a little bit more about what the teacher training looks like? The impact on the school day of implementation of the um, the myriad of recommendations? And also um, what interventions are going to be available outside of AMIRA um for students as they, as they come back to school in August?
So I'll start with the training. Like, um, I mentioned earlier, our kickoff is tomorrow. We have, I think, right now, four or five sessions hour-long set up um in the afternoons where teachers can drop in. Our mirror partners will be part of that, uh, where they will give an overview, be able to walk our teachers and psychers through the platform to know what they can expect, how to access the reports, how to in, set the students up with the program, get them engaged. So um, that would be the first level um going in. After those four or five sessions, we will determine if we need to add more for this school year to um, to see if, if our teachers, you know, need to continue to do that. We also have office hours. We've established, after we have the training sessions, if stu- if they just have, and then they go to their classrooms and try it and say, woo, that didn't go right, or it went really well, but I need some additional support. They can come back and ask questions um in that space. So we'll have additional office hours. Those are already set up and have been communicated to our sites. So we've, we have a plan to support teachers and make sure they have ongoing opportunities to interact um on, on initiating the process.
I just wanna add that some of the things we talked about um in our approach for the each and every, it's not just this year. We're doing it to see these best practices so that we can roll this out into next year. Does this work? What can we scale so that we can move this into next year? So in thinking about the tier-one instruction and thinking about those personalized letters to help our teachers customize the lessons. If we're, we have two hu- so right now, it's two hundred and twenty-five. We're anticipating that's what it is again, right? You think about two hundred Black and Pacific Islander students for next year. If we're able to help our teachers to see exactly what it is that our students need in the areas and we're giving the training and they're getting tier-one and they're getting the curriculum, I think it's all of those things together. And I don't want us to forget that all of these approaches will come together to support them into next year and what we're going to do to accelerate to the end of this year, um, working with those families. That won't stop next year because it's gonna be the teachers and the families. One of the other things we're doing, because it is a comprehensive approach, is working with community school coordinators. Um, Chris asked, how, how do we get our T, our, our um, community school coordinators trained? How do we get our family liaisons trained so that they can train the families when they're out of school time? They already have stations, right, where they do um independent time, or you said clever. They already have those opportunities where we can replace clever. And for these each and every kids, they're gonna do AMIRA. But then when they leave the classroom, how do we do it in the after-school program? Where these fifty-eight, where these, excuse me, not fifty-eight, these two hundred and twenty-five children are? And then how do we offer these trainings to our families or where our children are so that we can approach it from all the ways? I just don't want us to get stuck on, it's just what we're pushing into the classroom and for our teachers, that's one space. But I think if we're gonna change outcomes for our students, we know that classrooms will be impacted. And so we're gonna have to do all of these approaches.
Hello, there we go. For the public, in case you're wondering, uh, we are also monitoring our questions at the board level if they are tactical or strategic. So in case you're wondering why I may be typing away and not paying attention, I'm actually very focused. And so, um, thank you to Commissioner Fisher to, um, providing, transcribing while I'm asking my question. I think most of the discussion so far has been future looking around the interventions that we plan to have. Or some of the initial things that we're getting off the ground. What I would like to understand for this current year, academic year between the fall and the winter, particularly honing in on interim goal one point one. And I am so thrilled for the each and every by name initiative. I've been, um, wanting this to be, um, something that our district really focuses in for our Black and Pacific Islander kindergartners and our students in general. So I'd like to hear from staff around for this academic year, for the two hundred and twenty-five identified students. What are we seeing, um, is working? And, and in the supports and what is necessary? Well, I understand again, future looking, we're putting forward with the high dosage tutoring. I like to understand today, um, what have we learned so far for this academic year? And the progress that, why are there? So just looking at the percentage
Yeah.
From fall thirty point seven to thirty-three percent.
So I, I'm going to say one thing that I think is working, but it's, it's not showing up in the results yet. But this is part of the reason why the board has gone in this direction. And that's bringing a level of accountability that hasn't been there before. So we've done assessments over the years and, you know, you usually get about ninety percent of kids who take it. And, but we really looked at the first fall, um, assessment to find out who actually took it. And if they didn't take it, why not? And that became our district responsibility to find out like, why are, you know, why do we have kids who, um, and, and here was among these two hundred and twenty-five, but it was a good exercise for us to understand why our kids, um, you know, not taking it. And so we learned some lessons around that from, um, some of them, uh, you know, were students with special needs who maybe needed different accommodations. Uh, to being able, needing to support the classroom to be able to administer the assessment. This is a new assessment. But I feel like that's a level of accountability, um, that, you know, hasn't necessarily been there. And that by lifting up this, you know, interim goal has forced us to look at, you know, every single assessment to see what's going on. And then, um, I'll turn it if you want to share any other, any other examples.
Yeah, I mean, I'll share a couple just from my vantage point, but I would also love to hear about like implementation. So for me, what is working, it's an all hands on deck approach, right? Everybody is looking at this. And so we just met yesterday, it was our fourth, uh, was yesterday's day, Monday, fourth day of the week. Um, fourth Monday, we met as a coordinated care team to talk about things taken. And high school and middle school had to talk, we had to listen, not let had to, but participated in listening about what we're doing for the each and every. And really strategically thinking about what they're going to do for their transitional grades, sixth and ninth. And so it was the pre-k, but we're doing this all together in one room with all these folks, really thinking about literacy goals for our children, starting at the earliest ages. So I think that's the first thing that's different and working is that we're all to speak in the same language. Um, and it is like a, you must be in this space and then you take ownership, we create a work plan. And so it's not like we're just sitting and talking, we're actually diving into data, looking at these individual children. And then going as far as like, we had one exec, uh, associate superintendent, it's like, where do they live? Let's look at where they live and let's try to solve for how do we get them in school? Because maybe they live in an apartment building where there is somebody else who lives near and we can try to make that connection. Or there is a, um, Mrs. Wade Thompson is working with, uh, Malcolm X, and she is looking at one particular student who needed some help. And she is being creative and using all of her wisdom from her years of teaching to go in and directly support this student and this family and bridging them with their teacher. And so I think having folks come in and everybody's attacking this, and it's not just us suggesting things to the site is making a difference. Um, so I'll give us that and really proud of that. Um, where I think that we not are falling short, but where it can be improved is that it's new, it's going to take some time to roll out, right? This is a new initiative and I think that we go and say something's new and it's, oh, it didn't immediately shift outcomes, throw it away. We can't throw away, we have to invest in it. And so we just rolled out the just write readers. And I'm, I like giving credit to where credit is due. And so I named names and there is a principal Alan Lee who said, this is going to pay big dividends. He says, I'm reading with this child in my office with these just write readers. Right? Super excited by it. There was, um, Dina over at Sheridan, Principal Dr. Edwards, who is like, I'm so excited about this initiative is going to work. How do I get it for more of my students and making sure that it's getting out? So it just was slow to start. We just got those just write readers to them couple of weeks ago. So how are we really going to see the results, right? We're going to move into summer and try to do this. And so I think more time. Um, and then better messaging to the site, I will own that, I'm going to own that personally. Is that we were thinking, what do we do at a central office level and how do we convene us here? How do we message to our site that they have partners in this work and we're doing this with them? And that what, what is it that we're giving to them and supporting? And then what do we need? We've tried multiple things, just want to be honest, not like we did not do it. But how are we truly messaging to our sites that we are working, um, part, I think they know about it, but like, what else do you need? And how do we support? And then, um, yeah, it's quicker rollout.
I'm going to say one thing about implementation and all we've learned is having, uh, targets, having target schools, having target groups is really important. And so when we came out with the A Mira letter and sent it to our staff, we actually had three or four schools reach out to us and say, we want to be all in. How can we be all in on this? And they become really our, they'll be our champion schools and target schools and saying, we have the space in terms of our structure in the day that we can dedicate time to this. And so one of the things that we see is huge benefit when schools are able to do that. We can really follow them and, and follow their data and their practice and learn from them. And so when we scale at a different level or schools come with questions, we have models, um, for schools who's really invested and, and, and can share their experience. So we find that to be critical and we've seen over and over again, how that brings dividends for others. So I'm just really excited that some of our schools are stepped into that space and, um, hopefully we'll be able to bring them back to share what their experience has been.
I do have one more, just going to throw out there. So we talked about narrowing our focus more recently. So we have two hundred and twenty-five, we are going to serve each and every one of those young people because it's each and every by name. But we sorted that list and looked at our children who are approaching, right? So based on their star literacy stuff from fall, from, uh, fall to winter, those who are still just approaching, those young people, those scholars need just a little bit more. And so we're going to narrow our focus and intentionally do a little something extra in terms of like, how are we working with the sites for those fifty-eight young people? So that we can move and accelerate it for them and then making sure that we're taking care of the young people who are not approaching and steadying the folks who are meeting and exceeding.
Thank you. Um, I think looking at the three questions about whether to accept or not accept the report, is that we're still talking about? Okay. We're talking about the curriculum. Okay, I think that like I find myself very confident in this curriculum. It all sounds like a combination of things that I know worked for me and my peers when I was that age, if I can still remember. And then like as somebody who has done peer resource tutoring in the past, like somebody who's worked with younger kids, I see these things working. And I think combining them all at once. I just wonder about the, the first question being like, does the reality match the vision? Just because I'm seeing that like, we're not on track to meet that May twenty twenty-four goal. I don't think, I don't think a seventeen percent jump is necessarily in the cards for our third graders and we can't necessarily expect that. So then how much farther behind does that put us on our five-year goal? And then this curriculum is amazing. But then we can't also expect it to be like the work of a deity. And I think that that is the one question that I'm hesitant to say yes to out of all of them. Like I think this curriculum and these presentations have been absolutely wonderful. Thank you so, so much. So yeah, that's where my concern still lies.
I guess, yeah, it maybe just to, to build on that a little bit, I, I think I also, I think see concern with us reaching the goal. And I think one thing that I guess I'm going to say this, maybe it's talking about the side, both sides of my face a little bit. It's like, I, I'm excited to see the work that's happening, the efforts that are taking place and how they are different from the work that has been done before and trying to change the status quo. But I feel like what I'm still seeing that feels very much the same is the request seems to be for staff to do more work to support these students without there being structures in place to expand that support at the individual school site levels. I know a lot of that is to come next, but I think without seeing it here, the numbers and the goal doesn't seem realistically attainable. Just because of how much it feels like extras being put on for folks to do it. Knowing how much folks already do and how much folks are willing to do for kids, that folks are willing to make that sacrifice. But it doesn't feel to me that we have seen these strategies, these commitments become integral to the structure of the district and really reflect the highest priority. I do think a lot of work has been done, but looking at the, 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 the rate of acceleration for African American, Pacific Islander students in kindergarten, it doesn't actually feel like an urgent priority for the district. It doesn't feel like a primary one of our interim goals from the amount of progress that we made. And I think it makes me wonder what we can do to, I guess, better demonstrate that urgency and that commitment. Um, knowing this is a harder issue to tackle, but definitely knowing how long it's been an issue. It definitely feels that we aren't giving it the urgency and attention kind of universally that we should. And I guess just to, to, to lift up as we move forward, really figure out how we can, um, see the, see the results of our hard work, because the progress we've made has not led to success for these students and these families yet.
Um, I was going to shift a little, so I don't know if you wanted to respond directly to that.
No, I'll, I'll just say, I mean, I think in both of those points, you know, I, the, the theme I was going to respond to is so, is some of this is an element of, you know, how are we working smarter, not harder, you know? And so I can, I, I hear what, I, I visit many kindergarten classrooms, so I, I hear what, um, Commissioner Fisher is saying. But in every kindergarten classroom, there are times where students are sitting with books or their, you know, their, their iPad and doing work, engaging in literacy. What we're saying is, okay, now this time, you know, it, it, they're going to spend it with, uh, you know, um, uh, an assistant, right, an AI assistant who can give real-time feedback on the skills they need to know. Setting that up is going to be more, right? You hear there's training and everything, but doing it should be integrated into the classroom. And I think that's what we'll, we'll see is, as we're implementing the new strategies, like how to make that a case. We heard in our last progress monitoring report, a teacher share how not having the right to the curriculum is going to save time that can be used for, uh, really planning the lessons and, and the practices with the kids. That's the intention, but I hear, hear though that, that, uh, you know, there's work to be done to make it play out like that.
Yeah, I wanted to shift a little bit and, and come back to the line of questioning that Commissioner Lamb was using. I appreciate my colleagues were answering the goal monitoring questions. Um, and I think we're, as we're building this, it's like also kind of the flow, like I think what the part of it is like, you, you came back to focus on current performance, which I think is, is really helpful as a starting point. And then it's like, we use that and we use staff's answers to be able to answer these questions. So, um, and I really appreciate Mr. Irving's answer responses and reflective responses on kind of what's working, what's not. That's to, like, that's kind of the character of the conversation that I think is, is really helpful. So just also a reminder to colleagues to try to, including myself, to try to, um, the current performance questions are often the ones that lead to, um, more insight. And so I wanted to ask a question that I've asked before, so I may, may sound like a broken record, but what about bright spots? Um, do we have, uh, places, are there teachers where we, in the district where we see higher percentages of Black and Pacific Islander students, uh, meeting these targets? And if so, what are we learning from those teachers or those schools or those?
Yeah. Um, so we didn't bring a, a bright spot, a highlight, but we talked about a bright spot.
Which is great, because we've been asking that question.
Um, so I'll let, uh, our associate superintendent of schools, Sumitra Rice Mitchell, speak to one of our bright spots.
I think one of our bright spots is, good evening. Um, it's Dr. Charles Drew. We are seeing, um, uh, higher percentages. I think it was the, the last star test, we had forty-four percent for those students alone. And I think it's all the things that we're putting together, what was described this evening. It is the consistent instructional leadership team. It is the common plan in time. It's the consistent, um, use of looking at data as well and sharing strategies. They just had a data meeting where the teachers presented opposed to someone. And so they talked about their data, they talked about their best practices and they were able to explain their data and the reasons why there is family involvement as well as the things that we've heard this evening. And so want to make sure that we're doing that, um, this year and, um, next year as well. Can't negate what we're already started about having instructional leadership team where you're talking about the vision and teachers are having common plan in time where they can study, look at their lesson plans, look at what they're going to teach, go back, re, reteach it, look at actual student work and adjust their practices based on, um, what they see in the student work as well.
Under, I think you said, I think you said forty-four. I mean, we, we could figure out the exact numbers. But that's just to say, like, we were talking about changing the goal. I don't think we need to change the goal. If we have examples that are happening in our district today that are basically meeting the goal, it's really a question of doing exactly what you're talking about.
So are, are my fellow, um, commissioners and delegate okay with, if I wrap up with one question and then we do the answer of the three monitoring questions, just as a feel, non-official vote, of course. Um, and, uh, Doc, or, um, Ms. Rice Mitchell, your response was actually where I was going with my question was, you know, with around curriculum adoption in the monitoring report identifies four different areas as being really impactful for, um, improvements. And I'm just wondering what we are doing to speed up that progress as we go towards new curriculum adoption. So that would be professional development engagement, the integrity of implementation, um, site-based collaboration structures, especially as we're going to resource alignment, uh, alignment and use of data to inform instruction. We know these things do make a big difference and we heard from Glenn Park last, um, monitoring session. So what are we doing to develop the systems and structures where that is being accelerated?
I think it's what we've been talking about all along, every school having an I L T, every school having common planning time. We're going to have, um, literacy coaches at the schools as well. So this can be replicated as well. The messaging is going across, so it's not just pockets of schools. This is what every school is going to. Every school is, will experience, but taking folks where they are, like wherever you are in your I L T. If you're emerging, if you're thriving, if you're transforming, we're going to take you there and work with, um, the sites to do that. We are planning the I L T retreat June sixth, right after sixth and seventh. And so just to, we've been saying this, but to prepare sites to do this and then move it into, what does it look like to have a great level of planning team? And what does it look like for teachers to come together and to be able to look at their instruction and their practices as well? And being used to looking at data over and over and playing with that, not as a hammer, but to examine their practices and to move to the next level.
And I just leaning into say, I, I, again, we, we've had a lot of these strategies as a district, but what you're hearing is the real systemic approach. So something we've done to prepare for next year has been to actually add, uh, uh, or require, um, instructional coaches to apply for these positions and to indicate their commitment to some of these approaches, to recognizing they're going to support the new curriculum. They're going to support an instructional leadership team. They're going to support data conversations. Now, it's been a challenging process. I will say as we make these changes, you know, it, it, these are, uh, you know, we have had coaches who've worked for many years in the district. But we wanted to be very explicit upfront and Dr. Carleen Aguilera Fort laid out those expectations as part of the application process. So people coming in upfront know this is what we're doing as a district around literacy. And so while we've had a lot of coaches, there hasn't been that level of directness and explicitness of what the expectations are across schools around this work.
Thanks so much to all of you. And I, I was, it warmed my heart just to see the enthusiasm, Ms. Irving, and the work that you're doing and the level of commitment across the board. So thank you all. I know that this has been a heavy lift and we will be talking about new curriculum as our next agenda item. Um, but I appreciate that while we are in the second year of this, this is really the first year where the real monitoring has been happening and implementation, and that each and every, um, vision has started to, to move forward. And frankly, we, we're already seeing improvements in, in these first few months. So I really want to appreciate you all. Um, and then we can have a conversation here with the three questions and build our own muscle. So again, this, the, um, the structure of whether to accept the monitoring report or not isn't, isn't about, um, you know, like, whether we like every single thing that we heard or whether every single thing is hitting the mark. But it's first to say, does the reality match the vision? So we can answer that question and perhaps, like, I don't know if we want to do, like, thumb side down or just have a conversation, but would, where are people's, I heard, I saw some shaking, yeah. Yeah, there's not a whole, so I would agree. So I'm kind of in, like, the sideways. And then is there a growth towards the vision?
Talking about the interim goal and goal one.
In the, like, all the, so the interim goals that the superintendent, so when we look at the monitoring report and we see the overall goal, right, for the five-year goal, then what we're doing is looking, whether accepting the monitoring report and the progress to the interim goals that the superintendent has brought forward in order to keep us, hope, you know, ideally on track to be meeting, um, the five-year goal, recognizing that this isn't going to be just a linear process and some of the interim goals may be more, there may be more progress than others. And I want to, I also want to be clear that when we look at this, like, the answer, in order to accept it, it doesn't have to be yes across the board. We're not looking for, you know, in order, it's, it's to recognize that the work is, um, the scope of work makes sense, that the effort behind the work is showing progress and, um, that the strategy and plan appears sufficient to cause the growth towards the vision. Um, so if the answer is only one or two of the questions, we can table the matter and just keep the conversation going and just say, we just need to keep monitoring, we're looking for more evidence. Um, if the answer is, and I'm just reading off this sheet now, that if the answer is no to all three, then we should consider, yeah, yeah, oh, go ahead. Yes, please.
No, I was just going to add a, or just say maybe in a different way, because I was just thinking about how we were talking about this morning. So AJ was saying how, the first question, does the reality match the vision? Is basically, are we meeting the goal? Like, so that answer is pretty clearly no, right? I mean, we're not even near it, right? Which is fine, we didn't expect to be, that's, we just started. The second question is, are we, is there growth? And I don't think, certainly not significant growth, right? It's if the, and I don't, I don't know if anyone wants to make an argument that the answer to the question two is yes, but seems like it's probably no. So then the real question for us is, so there's sort of an order, is what AJ was saying. So the first question, and if, if the question had been yes, if we'd been meeting the goal, we'd stop there, right? It doesn't matter what your plan is. If you're meeting the goal, we, we don't have any business asking you about the plan because you did your job, right? Um, if we're making significant growth, again, we don't have any business asking you detailed questions about the plan because we're making growth. The question number three, the only time when we really get into talking about the strategy and plan is if we're not there yet. And since we're at the beginning of this process, we've set really ambitious goals. It's really, it's really question three that I think is the one that we're at this moment trying to answer. Like, do we as a board feel like there's a strategy and plan that is going to cause growth? Like, are we confident that, given the evidence they've presented to us, they have a plan that is going to lead to growth? I think is, is question three.
So this is the, the details of, of what we call a plan. Like, how are we defining a plan, right? Because to me, a plan involves all the resource alignment and the cascaded, yeah, I mean, budget. We've got to see the money, we've got to see the staff, we've got to see, you know, I, I don't see a plan. I see, I see an outline of a plan here. And I mean, this is no dis, I mean, like everyone has said, this is amazing. This has been a huge, heavy lift. You know, we're just at the very beginning of all this. So I mean, this is no criticism to anyone doing the work. I see parts of a plan, but I don't really see a plan yet. And so to be clear, when we talk about plans, for me, my definition includes all of the resource alignment pieces, the, the budget, the staff, who's responsible, who's accountable, you know, how it all cascades down. That's what I see as a plan. I don't, I just want to do a temperature check to make sure that my definition aligns with my fellow commissioners.
And that, that, uh, while you're, you could pass it over.
And student delegates.
No, that's a really good question. And this is, again, our learning process, because also, you know, um, the guidance from the Council of Great City Schools is that I don't think the progress monitoring report is meant to be the plan in the way you're describing, because it's, you know, just even the guidance is, it's supposed to be five to six pages and straightforward language people can understand. Still working on that as educators who love our, our jargon. But, uh, so I feel like that's a good, a good, you know, the, good question. What level in the progress monitoring report do you need to see to be able to say there is a strategy and plan sufficient to grow towards the vision?
Agreed. And we are very good at embedding documents within documents. So if in this five or six-page document, it doesn't have the holes.
Links.
But linking, like, showing that we actually, if it isn't in a five or six-page document, showing that we have it somewhere.
Okay.
You know, would be a great transparency, accountability mechanism, um, confidence building within us and, and the community. And that's where I think the, the, the details have been lacking. I think that within the purpose of goal monitoring, as far as I've seen it, I feel like I can confidently say yes to question three. I feel like this is a plan and it is also a strategy, which is an important part. And I think those two tie in together. I think they have, I've seen a strategy and a plan. I think, like, doing some quick math, it seems like on average, especially considering, like, the D, the decline when we look at grade three, it's about 2%, a little less than 2% a semester, which means a little less than, like, 4% a year, which would get us a bit below what we have now. And then that's assuming that this data continues in the way that we have it, which doesn't account for, for example, are we tracking, we're not tracking these same kindergarteners. We're going to track next year's kindergarteners. So will they start at that 33 or will they start at that original 30? And then will we have, like, 6% progress by the time they get there? Like, is it going to exponentially increase? And then also, like, how do we guarantee that? I think that's my worry, just looking at the data, especially since we seem to not be confident as a group that there has been significant growth towards the vision. And that's what the plan and strategy is all about. But can that happen in the timeline that we've set out? So I see the plan and the strategy, but I don't necessarily see how that plan and strategy will get us to where we're expecting ourselves to get to. It will get us a lot of progress, but maybe not all the way to where we've planned it.
Thank you. And, um, as we're developing our practice and our muscle, I think number three is a question mark. Um, while I am so thrilled, I mean, thank you, thank you to the staff for this work. You know, we're the first public school district in the state of California to adopt the student governance, the student outcomes governance. I'm really proud of the work that this board and working and trust-building with our superintendent and our staff. And I think what would be helpful, looking ahead, based upon the data that, you know, again, current performance, is to understand, given that we are off track, given that we are going through extensive resource alignment, um, and our budget, I think what would be helpful to understand moving forward is also SMART goals related to, um, those resources and budget. And I think I've talked with the superintendent before, you know, SMART goals being us to measure, like, X amount of dollars will bring X amount of resources to each and every student or to the school sites. Um, so I think that would be helpful around understanding in order to meet the question number three, to get more clarity around that strategy and will it help sufficient growth? Um, and while I certainly understand that a mirror is one intervention, I'm also very curious, as we're going through this, what is going to be, uh, while being focused and narrow, because we have been a district that wants to be everything to everyone, and so that has taken maybe some of our attention. So I think that's something I'm also interested in understanding, which will help me understand number three is, you know, what are other interventions and plans, knowing that we are off track, um, either with our, with overall the goal one? So these are just, again, future considerations as the team thinks about, um, in order for the board to have that number three question answered.
Uh, thanks to you all. And thank you, Vice President Alexander, for reframing the, and focusing on the third question, because I, that makes a lot of sense, given, yeah, no, I appreciate it. Um, and so I am, I think one, one of the, the assumptions that I'm making is also around curriculum adoption, which we haven't talked about, and moving towards science of reading and the untested impacts of that, that will hopefully have on our students, which is not something we've had in this district for quite a while. And I, and I have to admit, I do have, um, a bias towards high expectations of that implementation for our students, um, especially our, you know, our K through three students. And then the other piece, as far as the, um, strategy, I also want to, um, appreciate Ms. Irving's, um, mention of partnerships with libraries and community schools, because I do think there's strategic partnerships within the district and also, um, through our city partners that are also serving our students that I would love to see leveraged. So that's a plus one to that, and thank you for the work that's already been doing. And then the last request I have is just, um, for staff, despite our, our skeptical realism here, is to, um, don't, don't sugarcoat the data either as this goes forward. Like, let's, let's be real about what's working in the bright spots. But as we move forward, um, I, speaking for myself, I mean, not everything is going to, you know, pan out the way we hope. And I, I really want, I think this board is working hard to create an environment where staff knows that we're partnering, we want to see success, but we also want to, um, self-correct when we see opportunities to either strategically abandon or do a different job around implementation or how we're serving our students. So, so that's something that I just encourage, despite, you know, um, us, us pushing back a little bit. I hope that you know that we're in full support of the effort. And for me personally, the curriculum adoption, um, as well as high dosage tutoring. And, and I know that we're going for the quickest, fastest, but, um, I also know that there's a lot of, I heard a lot of interest on this board for, um, additional options to support our kids, um, who are struggling. So, but with that, are, is that, can, can we close this conversation out? Is there anything that, okay? Um, do we want, well, do we want, we're building the muscle, so do you want to conclude? Yeah, so let me pass it over to you. Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't say my answer. Uh, but, um, I think I'm kind of, I think I'm a little on the fence too, maybe with some of my colleagues. Um, I think, I guess, the way I would answer question three, in my opinion, I think there is clearly a strategy and plan. So I want to give much respect again and to the staff. I don't know, and maybe you don't know, if it's sufficient to cause growth throughout the vision. I think we all don't know. Like, I think we're all trying. And so I think that's where I'm kind of like, well, is this really going to work? We, we need to see. And I think there's these big pieces, like, like, um, President Matamidi just said around the curriculum. And that's a huge, huge factor that's, that may transform this in a big way next year, right? Um, and I think, I, I guess my, um, and I don't know if this is true of my colleagues, but my, um, instinct would be, yeah, to, to be bold, to try things. As, as my colleague said, if, we don't expect everything to work. Uh, and, and we hear that, we know that you have a, you know, a strategy and a plan, keep pushing on it and feel, and be ready to adjust it. And we'll look forward to continuing the conversation, um, as we move forward.
Well, that is actually a great segue, because my question was, I was, again, referring to our, um, our guidelines here. There is the option to just keep the, keep the conversation going when we, when we're not quite sure versus, you know, accepting or not accepting. And so am I hearing some amount of consensus around keeping the conversation going on this, um, on this particular goal and monitoring report? Just for, to our next session? Yeah, no, no, not keep the conversation going now. Yeah, oh, my God, yeah. So then.
Yeah, I mean, so we are going to revisit this in June, because we'll have the third trimester assessment, so.
So is that.
Exactly. Yeah.
Thank you. I guess I would just offer that we don't table it in that we would actually vote no on the matter. Uh, and I think, I, I just, in regards to the strategy and the plan being sufficient, kind of to what we see, I think the data that we've seen has shown that it hasn't been sufficient thus far. And I do know that there's more things ramping up. And I'm, I'm optimistic that I'll be proven wrong and that we will hit the goal by May. Um, I really would love that, as my kid is in kindergarten. That's, that's, that's a positive thing, um, in my direction. But I, I guess I just don't see it. I also feel like we have a lot of large structural challenges, from staff retention to staff turnover, that aren't a part of what we've been shared in this plan. That gives me confidence that those issues won't add on to some of the struggles that we're facing, um, with these student groups. And I, I think, you know, just as we started evaluating ourselves and really trying to set a really high standard of like, what is it that we want to represent to ourselves and the public about what matters to us and kind of what we stand for? I think, uh, saying no to this, kind of, I think, represents that we need to see more both progress as well as, I think, a little bit more clarity around how the plan is sufficient, at least staffed, resources, and will be implemented in a way that won't kind of burn our staff out so they can't accomplish, uh, what we're setting them up to do.
That ties into the conversation we had last month. Um, and I, I forget exactly the term that it was used, but when you grade students on academic rigor and having high standards, instead of giving them the, like, that, you get an A for effort, right? Um, if we're going to do that for our students, we should very obviously do that for our staff as well, would be my last feedback. Even though your effort does totally deserve an A. And the super, totally deserve an A.
Yeah, okay. So we are, we, we are not voting, though, tonight. It is not a noticed voting, um, item, but this is.
You can get a sense.
You can get a sense of where the board's at. Um, and going forward, we will know to notice, um, in which case, just so folks know, so we will be having public comment before the meetings, which is aligned with what we did now, and we will continue to do that. So with that, I, I close out this item, but we still have curriculum item, I think it's item E. Um, and so I was thinking we would move back, um, to our seats and hear that item.
Before we do, can I just share a final, yeah, the final reflection?
Got your own mic.
Yeah, I, I do want to appreciate the, the hard work of staff. Both here you see visible, but also, you know, from working in the classroom to everybody at those cross-departmental meetings. So thank you. But I do, I, I really appreciate the conversation. And, um, Ms. Rice Mitchell was, uh, quoting our illustrious, uh, uh, head of research planning and accountability about using data as a flashlight, not a hammer. And, um, you know, part of what we've talked about with the Council of Great City Schools with the Council of Great City Schools is this is a culture-building exercise. And so I want to be real. I appreciate the effort you've made to point out you appreciate our effort and that this is not a criticism. And I think the being real is because so often, going to say in education in general, and then sometimes even in this particular room, the data has been used as a hammer and has limited the vulnerability we need and the risk-taking we need to make this kind of progress. So actually, I want to keep for a while encouraging you to keep reminding us, we appreciate, you know, this is not a blame. We're challenging you to do right by our kids, because we know that's what you want. Because this is the culture we want throughout the whole organization. Because we're talking about going into classrooms, giving feedback to teachers. They're going to feel the same way. We give feedback to principals, they're going to feel the same way. And that's why doing this culture-building activity is so important. And appreciate just being real about the fact that it is a shift in culture. So we're going to need to say this 20 more times for it to really sink in that this is our approach. It's about being data-driven, focused on improvement, not just trying to show that we've done, you know, great, even if our student results don't actually reflect that.
So we will now move to action item, instructional materials adoption, item E. I'm going to just ask for a motion in a second first, and then we can introduce, or then, so moved?
Second.
Okay, great. And Superintendent Wayne, please tell us about it.
Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge that this is an action item we brought to our monitoring workshop, where typically we don't have action items or discussion. But what we're bringing forward is no surprise to our community. We've been working on this for over two years to bring forward a curriculum adoption. And we always intended to share the results of our piloting process and how we, with which curriculum we are going to move forward for next school year at this monitoring workshop. But we've talked about the importance of our implementation plans. And a key component of our implementation plans is that the teachers have the materials in their hands before the school year starts, so we can do training, including over the summer. And so for us to be able to actually order the materials, we do need the action by the board, so the publishers know that, okay, the district has officially adopted this curriculum. We can now start sending it to them and working on the order. So that's what, why we made this in the end, a separate action item and not just incorporated into our monitoring report. So you have the process we went through and the plan, but just to give a brief summary of the highlights, I'll turn it over to Dr. Nicole Priestley again and her team.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. And we can go to the next slide. I just want to appreciate that we have been on a journey to come to this point. And I think I've been in this space many times before and shared with you on several occasions, along with this team, about all the work that has gone into a very robust process in identifying the curriculum that we think will best serve our students. And so just some highlights. We started, as you know, with an evaluation of our current curriculum with our TNTP partner. They gave us some tremendous feedback. We evaluated all the curriculums that had green lights on the ed reports, and we narrowed that down to select two curriculums to pilot. And so we did some very robust data collection. We had over 200 teachers participating in the pilot. And there were multiple opportunities to engage community, site leaders, other central office staff, and many others, and many other partners in terms of what would be the best option for us. And so we believe that we have moved into a space, that we have identified a curriculum that meets the district goals, guardrails, and vision, and that we are here to present to you the curriculum that we believe will serve our students going forward, beginning next school year. So I'll turn it over to Devon Krugman, who will just highlight the ask of your approval.
Good evening. If we can go to the next slide, please? So, oh, one back, please. Thank you. So in putting forth this recommendation for the adoption of core curriculum, we wanted to highlight a couple of key components. And the first of which is guardrail three as part of the district's visions, values, goals, and guardrails. And so what we wanted to highlight is that the programs that we are putting forth with our recommendation for adoption, for TK, for K5, and for 68 are all deeply aligned to the district's guardrail three. And so what we wanted to name in the process that Dr. Priestley just highlighted is that these programs have been deeply evaluated in terms of their excellence, challenge, particularly around things like standards alignment with the science of reading, as has been named in particular at the K2 level, in terms of being engaging, student-centered, and culturally responsive. As you'll see in the data that we included within the appendix, we are really excited to, in those categories, highlight in particular, not just our educator feedback as primary, but also our student feedback and their perspective on the degree to which the materials are student-centered and culturally responsive and engaging. But the other piece we want to highlight in particular is around the degree to which the materials are differentiated to meet the academic needs of all students. And we want to talk about, in particular, differentiation to meet the needs of students with IEPs and differentiation to meet the needs of multilingual learners across all levels. And so these programs have not just been deeply evaluated in terms of our review teams and within the context of nationally-normed programs such as ed reports, but also we just want to highlight the educator feedback and time and energy that has gone into not just the evaluation of these programs, but the piloting of them. When we were here in December, you heard from teachers in Glen Park sharing their experience. And throughout the links that we have included, we also have not just the educator evaluations and reviews, but also their feedback on the piloting experience present throughout the audit, throughout the evaluation, and throughout the pilot data. So in making our final decision for recommendation, what we really want to highlight is that data embedded throughout and the research that shows that we believe that these programs strongly support not just the goals academically of the district, but also the experience of both educators, from administrators, from teachers to coaches, and students and families as well, that they feel that these materials are most responsive to their needs. And so I'm going to pass it back to Dr. Wayne.
Great. And thus, we're presenting to you the three curriculum for adoption for our TK and pre-K TK, and then K5 and 68.
At this time, do any commissioners have clarifying questions?
Yeah. Thank you so much for all of your work and for what has been presented. I think my question, I guess, goes beyond the curriculum itself and kind of the process to select it. And I think I would just love a little bit more transparency or insight. And maybe the superintendent would be best to answer this for someone else. I'm really curious about the implementation around the curriculum and our ability to successfully roll it out. I don't really feel like we've created a lot of space for educators to excel and adopt this new curriculum. And I just, I'm curious, what is our approach to that? How do the expected, I guess, gains we expect to see from the curriculum? How do we feel like those things will be impacted by potential of increased class sizes as we move forward? The amount of teacher turnover that we average from year to year? And how that will impact the implementation and the rollout? I'm also interested to hear a little bit about the skill and proficiency gaps in the classrooms and how this curriculum or how teachers are going to be supported to deal with that as they work through the classroom? And I think collectively, just how with everything that's happening and changing, will this curriculum be able to be successfully implemented kind of across the district with the fidelity that we'd want to see?
Yeah, I'll start. So we did attach a more detailed implementation plan. And, I mean, you raised, you know, some big issues. And I appreciate you always go back to some of the structural issues. So I'm going to highlight a structural issue that we face and how we're trying to mitigate it. But you're right that it's one we'll need to continue to think creatively. So let's take about, let's just think about the time teachers have for professional learning. There is going to need to be a lot of learning. We actually have very limited time built into our teacher schedule. So we are using, there are professional development days before the start of the school year. And then we have monthly release time. And so you've heard us how this year, we've been doing monthly professional development. We'll build in the curriculum piece, curriculum support in that as well. And then you hear us bringing in the instructional coaches. Again, while those are at schools, having some consistency across. What you see in the plan, though, where some of the limitations are, are the June and August curriculum institutes, right? So these, we're going to be paying teachers additional funds, which is well-deserved, but also means this is outside their regular work time. So we can't guarantee that every teacher will participate. And then, and similarly, then, any training that happens in the school year beyond the Wednesday release time will be additional hours. And so just, you know, thinking through how we can build in more time within, you know, within the regular work, you know, not just work day, but really the regular work schedule for when there's these intensive training needs is something we need to consider. But right now, we have them as these institutes that will happen outside of their current calendar work year. So that's one, you know, structural issue and how we're trying to address it. I'll look to the team if, or you can respond if you want to that one, or look to the team to share more.
I would say one of the challenges you highlighted are very real. And so we've been thinking about those. I think it's important, in the last presentation, we talked about the early release Wednesdays, a focus on text complexity, site text evidence. The professional development we've been doing has been to prepare for the adoption. So the teachers we have, we've been preparing them to take them into this space. And one of the things I think is important to note, and we've said it many times before, the adoption of their curriculum is really to create a floor of high quality across the entire district. That's the goal. We want high-quality, baseline core curriculum for every student. Our goal is to make sure we support our teachers on an ongoing basis to make sure that they can utilize and maximize that curriculum. And so one of the things we're thinking about, yes, it's June, it's August, it's going to be the Wednesdays that we have, it's going to be outside time, if we can continue to pay teachers and support them. We are, we're going to have to be intentional. We're going to have to utilize the time we have, and we're going to have to be creative. And so we recognize that this first year is really critical. We've been talking with our partners about how can we maximize everything we have at our disposal to make sure we have a really strong first-year implementation? Because if we do that, we can build on that year after year. And so when new teachers come on board, if we have teachers in schools that are already really well-trained, they'll have partnership, right? And so less relying on the district and at the district level and the central office and more, you know, resources at their site. So we're trying to think about how can we, over time, build capacity, build the strength, top to bottom.
And can I say one more thing? Sorry, I know, these are long answers, but you gave long questions, so. But you've brought this up numerous times. So I want to make something very clear. The, two things. One, the district did not have a strategy of small classes to improve instruction. Two, the district is not raising class size. What, we haven't agreed upon class size that we think can meet the students' needs. What has happened is, over the years, with our declining enrollment in some schools and some classrooms, we did not match up the class size and the staffing. And what the district does have, and we, this board agreed, we have an intent, we have an intentional strategy to invest in recruiting and retaining our teachers and not having the kind of turnover you've described. We think we can do that by offering more competitive salaries, which we have, and by actually having to fill fewer vacancies in the midst of a national and state teacher crisis by having our classrooms at the size that we had originally intended when we agreed upon the class sizes of 22 to 1. And again, it's going to end up being an average of 20 to 1. So I know you're highlighting that some of these changes that some classrooms will experience, but the flips, those changes are coming for a reason, because we were intentional to try to do things to not have the turnover that we've had, as well as not have the vacancies that we've had, that those, you're right, are much harder to overcome than whether a teacher has a curriculum or not. If a kid doesn't have a teacher, that's the hardest thing to make a, than for us to make a difference on outcomes.
No, I appreciate that response. And I think the clarity from both the superintendent and staff. I think the thing for me that I would just highlight, I definitely appreciate the attention, the thought that you've put to all of it. Looking at the implementation plan that you laid out, it's beautiful. I think the thing that I struggle with is it seems as if it was created with rose-colored glasses, where all the things that we're setting out to do are going to happen, and we're going to accomplish all of them, which has been very different from what it's felt like being on the board since I've been elected, where we've actually struggled and we've had things that haven't gone the way we expected. And I just, I don't see that in the plan of like, what does it look like for us to respond if things don't go well? If we have teachers who are out or site leaders who are out, who's going to support and anchoring these things? And like, what certainty do we have that everything on here is going to happen with 100% fidelity? I think we want it to, but I guess I'm not sure that we are sure it will. Or we have safeguards in place along the way to notify the board when things are breaking down? Because ultimately, I would say like, this is great, I like this, I want to see this implemented. What do you need to make it happen? Because if you don't have what you need to make it happen, you need to let us know now so we can budget for it, because this is of vital importance to us. And so I know the superintendent is crafting the budget, and he's working to make that happen. And so we are hopeful that we're going to see that and have that clarity. But I think for me, in all these reports, I would just love to see that extra level of detail about, these are our big institutional structural problems that we're dealing with everywhere. Here are our approaches in this particular area to addressing them. And here are the things we have in place if things don't go right, so we aren't kind of caught in a place where we're kind of stuck and stranded, like we have been with some of our other challenges as the district. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, to everything that Commissioner Bogus just said. First of all, I echo all of her. And I am just so happy to see us here. And again, going back to the comments from earlier, what a heavy lift this has been over, oh, my gosh, going back to phonological processing pilots 10 years ago, right? But over the past five years in particular, the fight to get TNTP into every school, to get people to be honest about, to Commissioner Bogus's point, like, where there were struggles, where there were challenges. Going back to using data as a flashlight, not a hammer, this is a huge cultural shift, right? And so to have us to the point where people are willing to say, you know what, this is the direction we need to take. We might, what we, we're not seeing the outcomes we want, so let's try something new. Kudos to all of you for leading this work and getting us there. I, I mean, it's been huge, so thank you. I can't give you enough virtual roses, and thank you, thank you, thank you. Kind of in that vein, though, I think we talk sometimes about, like, you know, sunsetting things that aren't working, and we are spending a whole lot of money on this. What are our plans to make sure we're not spending even more money on the things that aren't working? Like, are, are we, frankly, are we cutting off FNP? Are we cutting off LLI? Are we like cancelling those contracts and moving? Because that could be a way to save us some money and maybe fund this, right? What are we doing to actually force implementation of this and make sure that people let go of those bad practices that do not give us the outcomes we want? Especially when people really have to hop, opt into some of this, right? You know, when, when the training is, is happening during non-contractual hours. So, when, what are we doing to make sure that we're not wasting any more money on what didn't work, and we're really, really implementing what we know will?
So I'm going to give some kudos to our superintendent, who's really been good about this. He was saying, what are we going to abandon? Like, what are we giving up, right? And so, as we move this adoption forward, the reason, as you know, we have not had an adoption in a very, very long time. And I think part of that, in all honesty, has made a lot of what has happened very optional. And so, one of the things about this adoption is, is setting the floor and an expectation, this is what we expect to see in every classroom. And so, we want to see high-quality, tier-one, science-of-reading-framed instruction happening for our kids. We're saying that out loud. You hear me say that, you're hearing our superintendent saying that, we're saying that out loud. And we're working with our site leader partners, we're working with LEED, I'm going to give them a shout out, they've been very supportive, to make sure that we're holding everyone accountable for that. And so, we want to work with our sites to say, look, this is, this is our adopted curriculum, this is what we believe works, we have an expectation, this is what's going to be utilized, we're letting a whole list of other things go. I'm going to say that, whole list, you name your own things, we've got a whole list of other things we're going to let go, and some things we want to support. We want, we have named our supplemental materials that we want to have in classrooms that work hand-in-hand with our tier one. And so, that's, no, it's intentional. And so, I think I'm appreciative of how, I think, over the years, has built a very intentional plan for schools that we need to lean into. And so, we're excited to present this, and I think the challenges you're citing are as real, but I think for the first time in a very long time, we're taking a very firm stance on this is what we're presenting as what we believe is good for our schools and our students and our teachers. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm going to just be mindful of time, because we have a student delegate that has to leave at nine, and also childcare ends at nine, if anybody's using that. So, I'm going to encourage our commissioners, I mean, if you have a burning question, ask it now and ask it briefly, otherwise, I am ready to move to vote, so our student delegate can participate in that vote. And I do want to say thank you, and from my parent perspective, this couldn't, this could have happened a long time ago. So, so I really appreciate all the work that's gone forward, and then, you can get 30 seconds.
I just wanted to also say thank you, and in particular, around the board, and I know I raised this around asking for the alignment with guardrail three, and that was super clear. The process was really deep and, and in-depth and comprehensive. And also, just, Dr. Priestley, I want to appreciate your comments around that this isn't, adoption isn't just like July and August professional development, it's like an, this is an ongoing thing, and the ongoing professional development. So, all that just feels really good, and strategic, and thoughtful, and just want to say thank you.
With that, roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Pardon me. Student Delegate Simpson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Wiseman Ward, Vice President Alexander.
Yes.
President Matamony.
Yes.
Bye-byes, passes.
Congratulations. And with that, I adjourn this meeting at 8:57. Yeah.